And now, good evening. It is November 6th. We are here for the board meeting. We've had, we anticipate an executive session. We'll be holding a little executive session. We also had an audit committee. And now we're at 1.3 on the agenda. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. We are here as non-student board members. We are shy one student board member who we anticipate will be with us in December. Um, we now have for the good of the order, a forward discussion. There have been a lot of things happening. And maybe someone wants to bring them to light now. Anyone would like to?
I got a couple things.
Yeah, we could. We could go on all day. We will not.
We could. We absolutely could. All right, I'm gonna turn this off.
Bring it.
So, um, as the board knows, I'm an appointed board member to the advisory council to the school counseling program. Yeah, we had our first meeting weeks ago and it was a great meeting. Talked about a million different things that the counseling program is doing. I want to highlight two. Um, one was the mix it up day, which was on October 27th. The goal of that day was was really like getting people out of their comfort zone, sit with new people at lunch, plan activity. Um, the goal being to kind of break down clicks. I thought it was an amazing idea. And I think the counseling program will be talking to students, making sure they got out of it what was intended and plan for future events like that. So I thought it was an amazing first effort. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight was the food, community food. What do you, now look at my notes for what it's called. It's set up in the elementary school, not the community shop. Um, and it's a collaboration between the elementary school and the regional food bank to set up an area where families that are food insecure. Oh, you were gonna talk about it? I don't want to steal your thunder.
Go ahead.
But it's basically, it's a, it's a place where families that are having some food insecurity can come and actually shop on their own for food and other goods that they need to manage their household. I think it's amazing. It's changing the model a bit in terms of how people who are food insecure receive those services. And I think it's, it's great. Um, so those are just two things that the counseling program is doing. But it's great.
Can I just, I was gonna talk about a little bit. So, um, I have to say this is from Jeff at Ben Hill and Lynn Heffron. Lynn is our social worker down at the elementary school. They've really taken our food pantry to the next level. Um, they partnered with the regional food bank of Northeastern New York and officially opened their doors to free food to local families in need. It's confidential. It's down at our elementary school. Um, I'm going to be doing, we're doing a lot of push on this. I want to talk about it tonight. It'll be in our news and notes. Um, this comes from a site that was done that we're seeing a lot of families that have food insecurities in Worrisville community. They wanted to find new ways to be able to support it. So that is out there. Um, and it is going on. So you'll see this story on our website. It will be out in our news and notes. It will be out on Facebook, Instagram. So we are trying to get the information out there. So thank you, RJ, for promoting it because I think it's, they've done an amazing job starting this. I know that Tim, you're also involved in some of this as well.
Yep.
Um, so I know it's a whole community event and they're doing a great job down there. And the more people that can come use it, the better it is for our families and students.
How does this relate to the backpack program and same?
So it's, it's all intertwined, but this is another layer on top of it that allows for families to actually do shops.
But we still do the backpacks.
Yeah, we still do the backpacks and everything else as well.
Add to it now.
Yep. It's value add.
Um, I know there are, there are other things board members might want to bring forth. Amazing achievements by our students.
Oh, yeah, I have been a few. I would love to say congratulations to the girls varsity soccer team. Who was absolutely amazing, is the section two class B champs and made it on to regional competition. Um, their, their journey is over, but nonetheless, it was just an amazing season and super proud of those girls.
Cross-country students though? Um, and basically it just feels like there's been a lot of, a lot of student achievement in the past since we last met.
Oh, cabaret.
Yes.
Robbed and out of the year. I mean, it was amazing.
Yeah. I'm sorry to have been out of town for that. Um, yeah, so anyway, thanks to all the people, not only the congratulations to the students who achieved, but to all the people who've put in countless hours to make those things happen. It doesn't, it doesn't just happen. It's a lot of organizing and, um, work to get there. So. Is there anything else I would mention?
Color on was fine.
Yes, I am not.
Very messy. It's been built extra messy this year.
That, that sounds even better. And I think it was very successful. I think there's a, there's some fun things coming up too. So people should be checking their calendars. Um, we now have an opportunity for the public to be heard. Uh, item 2.1. Um, if there are any students in the audience, we typically call them out first. I, I think we should continue to give them that opportunity, but if they also wanted to speak later, I don't think we have any students, but there's any member of the public who is not a student, um, in our district would like to come forward, podium? Or not. Okay. Um, with that, we have, um, a follow-up from the reason we are here on October 19th. We are here for a forum discussing the budget and also potential exemptions or exemptions, changes to exemptions. And we're going to do a, a follow-up on that, um, to note some adjustments. Jim?
Before we even begin with that, I want to apologize. Don't let me share my screen. So people at home, they're just gonna have to go on the board doc and click on the PDF. It's there. But everyone here can see the screen.
So to follow up from the October 19th public forum, uh, there were some concerns expressed by the two fire departments that the total number of members would not be as high as the, well, the exemptions would not be as high as the total number of listed members on their websites. So noting that, I went in and made an adjustment, uh, to their 55 estimate of the total amount of exemptions that was a maximum. So you can see that that went down significantly. I think it was 16.5. Now it's $4.80 for an average. The, based on re-looking at that information, I decided to go back in and make sure all the other estimates were correct. The senior citizens' low income exemption, slight difference, I believe it was 18, now it's 1650. The biggest difference was the veterans exemptions. I'm not quite sure what happened. I think I probably grabbed the next row up, which is the senior star. So that's a much larger number. In fact, the impact is only $15 versus the $66 that was estimated before. So in total, if all three of these changes are adopted, it's a $36 impact for the average value home versus the estimated 100 that was at the hearing. So just wanted to bring everyone up to date with that, make sure everyone had the right information as we're considering this.
The firefighter exemption is the one that we don't currently have. First we start on our calendar. Um, that one is roughly 480 for an average home. So that is a difference in comparison to the conversation that we had earlier. Um, the other ones are all increases to what we currently already have. Um, but this one is the one that would be added on.
Okay. Um, and just to, just to explain, just to follow up, we talked to folks, we listened. We, we didn't talk really, we listened to, to people who came to the forum. And we also, that was posted to the YouTube channel. And we provide the opportunity for any member of the community who wanted to reach out to us. We wanted to give time for people to get a chance to watch the forum and think about their thought, think about their concepts that they want to share with us. So we are going to bring these, um, exemptions to put them on the December agenda and discuss them and come to a decision at that point. Um, about how we can go forward.
It, it will technically be a public hearing on those exemptions, uh, which is what's required for you to move forward.
Thank you. But that would be on the agenda for December, giving anyone who wanted to provide any further input that opportunity so that, but that still gives plenty of time to reach the March 1st deadline for everyone to do anything that would be needed to, if. Yes. Everyone understood.
I just want to make sure we can effectuate anything prior to the next fiscal year. Am I correct?
Correct. Once you hit March 1st, you're done for that year, uh, for the upcoming.
We couldn't do anything before March 1st. I mean, we could, we take action, but it can't start until later.
Correct. Because that's the valuation date. So, yep.
And it would impact the property tax bills that go out in July, I think, or become final.
End of August. Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about this topic? So.
No, we can bring it back.
Thanks.
So you said it has to be a, a hearing, but it would be able to be at the board meeting. It just has to be a hearing at the board meeting. It has to be a separate.
So Jim, just so I understand the $4.80, that would be based on the full exemption. It's, it's based on a percentage, right?
Correct. And this assumes the 10%, which is the max.
Right, okay.
So it's one and a half cents for every, or 1.6 cents for every $1,000 worth of house.
Right.
Okay. We haven't discussed as a board, but we'll have to have something in mind for number of years of service. And are there any other variables I'm not remembering?
Yeah.
It's between two and five years of service that we can choose. It's the percentage up to 10. It is, um, lifetime membership after 20 years of service. It's if a member is killed in duty that has the exemption, if their unmarried spouse can continue it. And then if a lifetime member dies in any way, if the unmarried spouse can continue. So.
Okay.
And there's some variables yet that we have not addressed with the veterans exemption as well, correct?
So this new estimate is based on going to what's considered the base level. If a municipality just says, hey, we're putting in a veteran exemption, it would be at the level we will be going to here, which is three times our current level. So.
Does everyone feel comfortable with us discussing this public hearing in December, December 4th?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for that final. That, um, we have a new, new experience. Shannon's gonna join us. Shannon Spolin is Spolin is, um, she's a new teacher.
Yeah.
Very light enough for eternity.
All right. So I'm gonna introduce this a little bit. Um, you know, we, the board talked about getting a glimpse into our classrooms and a glimpse into what our instruction looks like in our buildings. I think this is a twofold for us. Thank you, Shannon, foremost. Shannon also won an award regarding co-teaching for creative writing, um, that she already does. And she pulls some of what she has gotten an award for into her classroom. Also, creative writing is a, a new curricular course that we're offering here at the district. So it's kind of twofold. You're getting to see something that Shannon was actually acknowledged for and with an award. Also, something that she's brought into our school community, um, as an elective for, um, for English. I was gonna say reading, I don't know what it is. All right. And Shannon, I want to apologize first and foremost, some of our board members can't get on the padlet. So. Oh, I can't.
Can you hear me now? I wasn't sure if you wanted me to turn it on. Okay. If you can't get on the padlet, that's okay. We've all been traumatized. I'll just walk you through it in a different way. No problem. Um, so my name is Shannon Spolin. I am an English teacher at Clayton and Abaton High School. I teach English 10 honors and public speaking and creative writing.
We're, we're gonna turn up the volume. Anything?
Just tell me when.
Oh, there you go.
Better?
Yes.
Good? Okay. This brings back some really dark memories for all of us, I'm sure. But anyway, my name is Shannon Spolin. I am an English teacher at Clayton and Abaton. I teach English 10 honors, public speaking and creative writing. Thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to be here. I'm just gonna give you a quick, uh, as brief as I can overview of what creative writing looks like for our students. And then if you're open to it and willing, we'll do a really quick activity that I actually do with our students so that you can get an idea of what it, what it really looks like and experience it yourself. So as Frank said, this is our second year with creative writing. It's mostly upperclassmen. I have a, a few sophomores here and there, but it's mostly juniors and seniors. Um, we go through several units of which include personal narrative and memoir. That's when they work on their college essay as well. We do fiction, uh, fiction writing. Right now they're working on the fractured fairy tale, which is really fun. We do creative nonfiction, or if you want to get really fancy, you can call it literary journalism, which is what I like to call it. Uh, and then we finish up our half-year course, right? So it's from September to January with poetry. When your students walk into the classroom, what they see is a bunch of tables. We don't sit in rows. We sit in tables of five or six. I like to call this a workshop model. Um, so they're very used to talking to one another. I do let them sit wherever they want. They are upperclassmen. That's, that's on them. They have a, a little bell ringer that they do when we start class. This can be anything from how was your weekend to what's the difference between point of view and perspective, right? Um, and then we get into the, the heavy lifting. So they know, I'll tell them straight up, like sometimes we get a little hippie dippy. Sometimes we get into our feels and sometimes we focus a little bit more on the mechanics. It depends on our mood and what our focus is. But it is a writing intensive course. Well, you know, it's called creative writing. But it counts as their English credit. So it's really important that we're incorporating rigor in there as well as fun. I just want to highlight that and make sure we know. Um, and so I'll let you know what we did today. For example, they're working on fractured fairy tales, which is fairy tales kind of spun on their head. For example, we all know the tale of Little Red Riding Hood, but we don't know the story from the wolf's perspective. For those of you that have elementary kids or, um, just a, a love for children's literature like I do, you might be familiar with The Stinky Cheese Man and other fairly stupid fairy tales. I don't know, maybe not, but we read a children's book in class today and then, you know, it was great inspiration. They were off and running, uh, writing their own. So I would love to answer any questions you have about creative writing. And then if you're open and you're willing to get hippie dippy with me, we'll, we'll do a quick activity that I do with the kids.
Ready?
I think we're, we're ready because.
All right, awesome. So you do, does anyone have access to the padlet? Anyone at all?
I can present it. Got it?
Fabulous. Okay, this is good. So can, can you, are you able to type in it or not so much? Oh, excellent.
It's just meteor showers. You guys have seen.
Yeah.
So on the bottom right of this, of the link to the padlet, do you see a little green plus sign?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Are you able to click that? So you don't have to type anything right now. I'm just asking. Are you able to type in there?
Yes.
Beautiful. Okay. So what this is called, this is called a text rendering, like I said before. And what we do is we take pieces from an already existent text. And, um, we take the lines that resonate with us, or I tell the students what calls to you to create something new. Um, this is a poem called Meteor Shower written by Clint Smith. He's an amazing educator, activist, Harvard grad. I really love his work and I wanted to do something short and sweet. And I think that speaks to the community of Worrisville. So here's how it's gonna go. I'm gonna read the poem and I want you to just absorb it, just enjoy it, absorb it, listen to it. And then the second time I go through the poem, I'll read it again a second time. I'd like for you to please choose one word, one line or one phrase that resonates with you, that calls to you, that you feel like you identify with for whatever reason. I would also like to let you know that when you add to this padlet, it is completely anonymous, right? So your names are not attached to them. Um, and this is what's important to students as well. So just to clarify, a word is exactly what it sounds like. It's one word. Um, a line is a little bit longer. Maybe it's a few words that call to you. And then a phrase, maybe there was a few lines that called to you and you have a couple that you'd like to get down. If you want to add more than once, you're more than welcome to. I welcome that. But for this very first experience, we're just gonna listen and enjoy. So this is Meteor Shower by Clint Smith. "I read somewhere that meteor showers are almost always named after the constellations from which they originate. It's funny, I think, how even the universe is telling us that we can never get too far from the place that created us. How there is always a streak of our past trailing closely behind us, like a smattering of obstinate memories. Even when we enter a new atmosphere, become subsumed in flames, turn to dust, lose ourselves in the wind and scatter the surface of all that rests beneath us. We bring a part of where we are from to every place we go." So thank you for experiencing that with me. I'm gonna read it a second time. Now is when I'd really love for you to please choose your word, your line or phrase and type it into the padlet. You'll click on that little plus sign. It will pop up sequentially and anonymous. Okay. This is Meteor Shower by Clint Smith. "I read somewhere that meteor showers are almost always named after the constellations from which they originate. It's funny, I think, how even the universe is telling us that we can never get too far from the place that created us. How there is always a streak of our past trailing closely behind us, like a smattering of obstinate memories. Even when we enter a new atmosphere, become subsumed in flames, turn to dust, lose ourselves in the wind and scatter the surface of all that rests beneath us. We bring a part of where we are from to every place we go."
Do we pick publish?
Write something incredible.
So what you'll do, and I can read it a third time too. I see that we have people active on here, which is wonderful. If you click on the green plus sign, you'll type in your word, your line or phrase, and then you'll have to hit, I think it's in pink. It'll say, there it is. Beautiful. Oh, this is gorgeous. Okay. I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes in case there are more additions. Excellent. Okay. Let's give another like 25 seconds, a little less maybe.
And Shannon, I want to apologize. I can't present it, so no one is seeing this, but.
Don't be, they'll, they'll hear it. I'll read it aloud, Frank, but thank you for letting me know. So what I'm going to do, and I know that you can't see this, but I'm going to read the contributions that you've made. So you've heard the poem twice. And now I'd like you to listen to the poem that you created. Um, and I'll start, I'll start now. Smattering, turn to dust. Oop, hold on, I'm gonna start over. We've got some more additions. Okay. This is the poem that you've created. "Trailing closely behind us, smattering, turn to dust. We bring a part of where we are from, subsumed in flames, turn to dust, like a smattering of obstinate memories trailing closely behind us." So what I'd like for you to do is envision this in a classroom of, you know, 15 to 20 students. Um, and what we typically realize is that a lot of us choose the same lines or the same words or the same phrases. And we create something unique and beautiful, but also reminds us that we're not alone. You know, a lot of us are appeal, you know, the same things appeal to us and resonate with us. And then we talk about, we talk about what that means and we get in our feels and we talk about the human experience. And, um, and then I hang them somewhere in the classroom. So if you ever find yourself in the building and you want to pop by 149 and read some of our other text renderings, I welcome you to do so. They're really beautiful. Um, and I thank you for participating in a text rendering tonight with me. I hope that you enjoyed it. Um, I'd love to answer any questions, but if you don't have any, I'd also love to just let you do your thing.
That was fabulous. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you so much for having me. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucky students. Well, um, well, that was, that was an experience that hopefully you could share. Oh, we, um, and with that, we move to 3.3, the superintendent's report, which sort of began, um, beginning of the meeting.
All right. So we're gonna begin first and foremost with Karen. So I'm gonna have Karen come up. We are doing our three through eight presentation for New York State test results. Um, hopefully this will actually present this time and be able to do that. Look, um, a couple of things before we even begin. These are our three through eight testing. You know, we are not what our, all of our New York State tests are. We're more than that. We do a lot with, um, measuring and utilizing other student assessments that we'll kind of get into a little bit. Um, we cannot give a full picture of last year's results for state testing because the high school reports are still embargoed. Um, so you're not getting our region's results. We'll probably end up going through those during our curriculum committee, if and when they ever get released. For everybody to be able to do, but the state has not given them to us at this time. So we can't, um, we can't release them out to the public yet. So. So therefore we can't. And all we're going to do today is talk about through our three through eight and some of the other ultimate measures and what we do with that result. So Karen and I are gonna kind of jointly do this together.
Yes. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Good evening. Thank you for, uh, for having me. It's time. And I really wish I was doing meteor showers because I was an English student. I'm just so drawn back into what Shannon was doing there. I know that was great. So, um, so the New York State testing program is what they call the three through eight assessments that they give out in New York State. We're gonna be looking at, um, English Language Arts, Mathematics and Science. 2223 was the first year of the updated tests that are now aligned to the next generation of English Language Arts, next generation of mathematics standards. And it was the last year of our old science standards, which I believe were 2016. Our new ones will be coming, right, Dan? Indeed. Um, so thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
The state, there we go. The state's moving to computer-based testing for CBT. And, um, this year we're required to have grades five and eight do the ELA and the math online for computer-based testing. Now, we've been doing that for years in the middle school. We've been fully operational with CBT. Um, and for the past few years, we've been doing ELA, grade five. Even last year, we started fourth grade ELA for CBT. Um, but this year, the, um, it's really not too much of a heavy lift because we're just adding in math for the computer-based testing.
And in the future, the goal is, what the state is looking at is they go three through eight testing on computers for everybody. And then eventually switch to nine through 12 computer-based testing as well. So that's the end result, like of where they're going. Um, they're just slowly rolling that out.
Wait, they're going to add big testing to nine through 12?
They already do. Read its exams.
Oh, but.
So they're going to have those be computer-based in the future.
I mean, they've talked about it for years. I think the thing that held it up was not having your one-to-one, having the, the technology that now we, we're all getting there because we're all caught in COVID.
And right now, a lot of college board are all.
We're all online now. Yeah. Um, and this year's new science assessment will be CBT. That doesn't mean that you can't have a paper test for a student who is, um, learning disabled in a way that needs to have a paper. But there, the expectation is that now everybody falls to CBT as we move on. So this year, five and eight, next year, four and, uh, four and seven, four and six, and then finally three and seven as well. Yeah. Um, so proficiency results. We're gonna take a look at our district's proficiency results. And when the state says that, what they're talking about are the students demonstrating proficiency in the knowledge, skills and understandings of the end-of-year grade level standards. The first, um, chart that you're looking at up there, hopefully everyone can see that. Okay. Um, is first I'll start, this is in the language arts. And I will start with a reminder that there are core levels and assessments in which, um, we measure students' performance. One, two, three, four, three and four are proficiency. Um, four is actually considered mastery. And this chart is showing the percentage of participating students who received levels three and four on the test. So I will also say that, again, 2023 was the first year of a new test and they do usually warn us not to, uh, look at close comparisons with tests that are different. There were a couple of changes to this test last year. Um.
You made that eight, baby. That's as big as it can go. Yeah, it's as big as I can.
Will this attack, will this be attached to the agenda?
Yeah.
So, uh, the building level, you'll see the elementary school had 59% proficient.
Under.
And at the middle school, we had 62% proficient. Um, and I will note that the students here who were in grade three were your students who were in kindergarten and COVID hit. Students in grade four were kids in first grade with COVID hit. That's something to note because, you know, that's that foundational skill and we're moving. Um, and that was interrupted for sure for those students. Um, anything else that I want to draw attention to that? Uh, I will mention that that's, um, called the heat map. So you see the stronger our performance, the darker the color green and more light green into yellow would be more neutral, more at the average 50 percentile. And then as you go down lower, it's gonna get pink or red.
Next slide. So, Karen, just on that slide, looks like every grade except fifth grade had a decrease in their proficiency.
Yeah, but I think it's really important to, you can't really look at the 22 to 23 because it's a different test and different framework. So, the state's saying, actually, you don't want to look at 2022 at all, even though you want to look at, you want to say it's a decrease or an increase. You want to be very careful on that because it's a new test.
There are a lot of things that are in common, but there are numbers. I'll, I'll give you an example. For third grade, um, they actually took away the longer essay. Again, one, I would have thought, okay, well then maybe we performed even better than we had the year before. But does the COVID impact that? I'm not sure.
So, they're looking at this new one as being your new benchmark. So, you want to then look at your rest of the years on, and look at that and then do it. You really don't want to take 22 to 23 and do a cross comparison. We did it kind of just to show you how it works, but in all, in all purposes, look at 2023. And also, you know, we only, we only use this as a guidance for our standards and through other things. There's other things that we utilize as well to be able to take a better look at everything that we do.
But you're not wrong with what you just said.
Yeah.
I'll save my comments for some other forum.
Yeah.
23 to 24 though, we can look at a direct comparison.
No, they'll change it.
Exactly right.
Don't.
Yeah.
They will.
It's not a whole game.
But they're measuring proficiency, proficiency.
Right. I see you're right.
This is.
But these are, these are the marks and, and things that we get identified for and/or awarded for. And these are the things that go on like the US News reports and all those other things. These state tests are the ones that they utilize for those. So, and I think it's important that we look at them, but not take them in the stat 100% that this is who our students are or our staff are. It's a snippet of one item of one thing that we do.
Uh, it was quick, but do we have, uh, at one point, we looked at data from surrounding districts. Did they all have a similar difference?
I have to be honest, the New York State data site where that
Not there yet.
Once the embargo's lifted, you can usually find, you have to look up Gilda Winnack and check them on or whatever. That's not there now. I reached out to NAREC, um, which is where you'll see some of these reports come from, um, what they call tablo. And they said, yep, as soon as we get it, we're going to put it in tableau, but they, the state, I, my understanding is the state hasn't really seen, because I haven't been able to find it yet. Um, but I will.
It's a slow rollout of these results.
But I, I, it has been slow. But I will show you at the very end that, uh, we compare ourselves to our VOSEs. So, while it's not specific, it still does help us in some information. So, what you're looking at now with this pie chart actually includes our students who, um, did not take the test. So, the refusals. You're going to see a building breakdown of levels one through four as well as that purple indicator on the left is the elementary. On the right is the middle school of refusals. Um, also in the middle school, you'll have students who took, this is ELA, right?
Yeah.
So, that's all you'll see is refusals. But for the math, you would see.
Wait, level one is a grade?
No, level one is your lowest understanding.
Yeah, and most need according to that test. So, this, level two would be, um, needs support to meet proficiency. Level three would be proficient. Level four would be mastery. Students who are mastering those standards. And then the purple are those students who didn't. So, um, I'm looking at this building wide because that's what New York State does with their accountability. As you know, that, um, when they're setting accountability, they look at not only the way our students perform with those students who take the test, but they also change the denominator and include all the kids who took the test, uh, or who didn't, who enrolled, whether they took the test or not. So, that shows some effect on us. Um, so you can see that there's, we grow in not tested. So, in grade three, we only had two students last year who were not tested. And then by the time we get into the middle, and then we had 10 who didn't test in a fourth and fifth in each of those grades, and then we get into 23, 21, 21 from the higher, the higher grades. And this is not a test for a content area where they're taking, but we should say there. So, these are just the. Um, uh, what else do I want to say? Oh, building wide, interesting. Just to note that, um, both at the elementary, you could see the level four or the mastery students. Those are the darkest green. We had almost 17% there in the elementary. So, we had 52 students in that building who reached that level. And in the middle school, we have 53 students who reached that. Which I thought was noteworthy.
How does this reflect what teachers think of their students' level of mastery or proficiency? Does, do their test score, do these test scores reflect what teachers would assess, there's, how their teachers would assess their students' levels?
Um, I mean, I, 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 I'm trying to understand, think if I understand that much more.
Do you, are you saying if a kid gets a level four, are they getting an A in their English class? And vice versa, if a kid's getting a level one, they're failing their English class?
Not failing or getting a, a grade, like, does the teacher think that this reflects the student's comprehension and ability? Because a grade can also be affected by extra credit and test.
So, I can't answer what the teacher says because I hadn't specifically asked that teacher that question. But I will tell you that we use multiple measures to truly understand where our students are. So, in order for them to say, well, do you think your state tests assess where our kids are? The answer is going to be, in my mind, no. It's not, because it's one data measure that they utilize. Or our teachers use multiple measures to be able to understand where our kids are, and then they, then they get support since it's needed to be able to do this. So, this is a snippet for an example, but again, it's, it's a snapshot of where a child is that day while taking that test.
In April.
In April. It doesn't automatically mean where they are. So, you have to use these tests for what they are, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. So, this is a snapshot of an assessment that's based off the standards that New York State wants you to measure.
Which is exactly why New York State let go of the idea of saying, if the student didn't receive a blank or a, you know, they have to have AIS. Well, that's not true because there are plenty of students who, uh, for a number of reasons, one of which could have been, I don't feel like doing this test today, uh, didn't perform so well. So, they're saying, we have to look at, they're actually saying you have to look at multiple measures. You can't just say, okay, you just grow on this test, you're, you're in this, you're receiving this.
These are measures that the teachers utilize only to their students. These are measures that we utilize across the district, across grade levels and across buildings. Understand a perspective of where our children are based off of our standards. It's not a full picture of it.
So, do, do teachers see individual test scores for their students and then use that as part of?
We provide that to the principal.
We're going to share something in a minute to you about that. And it's not more, it's not so much for individual students. It's so much for where the standards are and where they could have, could not. Where they were really well on the standard or where they maybe get, and that gives them the assessment. We'll talk about that. You guys are getting ahead of some of the, we're going to talk.
Good question. Um, and now we have the chart for.
And remember when I said don't look from year to year?
Now you can.
Now you can look.
But it's interesting because, yeah, you do see that, uh, in, in that, especially like, take a look at that elementary school. We have 74% proficient in the, in the grades three, four, five, even if you're just looking at 2023. Um, about 75%, about 70% and about 75%. Again, I'm looking at 76%. Um, middle school, 64%. And now, the first thing that would jump out at me is that red, right? Is that red? Um, little blurb there in 2022. Um, remember, we have so many kids who do not take the math in eighth grade because they're taking algebra. So, for years, we usually have, uh, a group of maybe 25 to 30 students who take that math test because there's a whole group of, of, um, strong math students who take algebra regions. We don't ask them to double test. And then a group that's left, not everybody wants to take that test and they don't do that. But actually, we have 50 students take the test. And I thought that was interesting because we actually have, um, pretty good result there. Um, of 60 is a 68%. Um, in the past years, it was often 25, 35, 40%. I think the last, um, highest one was 44% some years ago. I just think that's interesting. Uh, and that a little bit more students taking it brought up our scores on that. And then you can move on to the, these pie charts, you can see. Um, oh, go back to the next one. Thank you.
Rachel asked a question about grand total and not average.
Is that, is that a total or an average?
So, you know what that is? That came from the chart that I was pulling it from. I probably should have snipped it off. It was just the average of those two years.
So, that's the average of 20?
22 and 23. I probably should have just clipped that right off, Rachel.
And the bottom as well as an average? Okay.
The average of all, uh, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for saying that.
Hey, look at that pie chart. Um, you can see a sizable chunk of students at level four at the elementary school. We have 22, is it 22 or 20?
Yeah, 22.90.
23% at level four. Um, and that drops, obviously, when you go into that middle school. But again, we're including all those students who are not testing. We had 26 students take, who aren't being counted there, who took the algebra test. Um, and another dozen or so, I think, what, were the 19? I'm trying to remember if we counted that as didn't take the test. Um, but I'm trying to think. Oh, yeah. So, actually, I did take a look at elementary, if each of the alphabet, um, the students who were not testing, who were just like, just paying students, that was actually 25% reaching level four. One of every four students reached mastery. And of course, it makes sense that that's going to go down a little bit in middle school because it gets a lot more difficult in the next grade. It gets more abstract. So, as we're talking about budget, I know some other schools have brought in dedicated math teachers. Um, not assigned to a particular classroom, but available to students during their study halls or free periods to seek extra instruction in math. So, I know these, these numbers probably aren't all that troubling, but they, they appear low. So, maybe that's something we should think about in our.
Yeah, I think the more important thing is to look at our high school number there. Because when you get to our high school numbers and our passing rank, proficiency rank for those reading exams as they get into it, those are much different, right? So, again, I wouldn't bank on everything you see on this. I would look more at the overall ELA, the, the, um, STAR assessments, all the other assessments as we're looking at making good recommendations to do those things because this is, and I'm trying to be as politically correct as humanly possible. Um, the state exams are one component, an aspect of it, but I wouldn't put my hat on. That's, I, I think that's extremely important to, to know over and over and over again.
This slide is science, our eighth grade science assessment. We had 75% the past couple of years that were proficient. Um, we only had 40 kids taking that test this year.
Reason being is the most, the majority of our students are taking earth science as well. So, we don't double test our students if they want. For our science, if they're taking a reading exam, we don't have students double test. For that same reason I was kind of mentioning before is the reading exam is what holds the weight for those students in the credit bearing, and it's more important for them to take that and not get overtested.
I think there were like 95 in that cohort. So, we had 36 taking earth science. That's a big chunk. We're good at. So, as Frank alluded to, uh, how do we use the data? What do we do? Um, the lens that we focus our data, uh, depends really on the purpose and the multiple measures that we want to use. So, we can go wide or we can zoom in. So, if we zoom out, we, and we can measure and move forward by thinking about building-wide results, grade-level results. Just like Frank had mentioned a minute ago, we're looking at the New York State assessment piece, but we're also looking at our local benchmarks. We're looking at our STAR, um, reading and writing in the elementary. We're looking at our STAR, um, ma, I said reading, reading and math, excuse me. And then STAR in the middle school, we're doing for math, and we're doing a new assessment this year called Common Lit for our middle school students on ELA. So, starting with that wide-angle lens, we look at the results to see that big picture. So, we can return to our curriculum maps. We can look for priorities specifically that, um, you may want to, things that we might want to tweak if we're seeing, um, anything that's showing up between multiple pieces, right? The assessment, how we've performed on that, as well as our benchmarks. Um, then we also, you're moving me on. Go back, go back. Uh, we also want to zoom in a little bit with our lens, right? So, at that level, our teachers are looking at individual student results or small cohort results, and that's when they're digging in and thinking about this target area that the student needs responding to that and then progress on. So, we've got the wide lens for the big picture for how's our curriculum working? How's our instruction? Is there anything that? And then we can go in closer to look just at a system or small group that I'm working with if I'm doing, um, academic intervention.
So, for example, AIS math this year, we have a program that we've initiated in the middle school. Sixth and eighth grade math teachers are now teaching into that program, taking students who are not as deficient or showing deficiencies within those programs, and then targeting their interventions based off of their. Some of that.
This is, um, what I mentioned a little bit earlier, where we can look at how we're performing to the VOSEs. So, this is capital region VOSEs. And you can see a few years there. Again, the darker the green, the more, the better the performance was on that particular standard. That's a whole list of English Language Arts standards on the left and on the right. I pulled, um, one for math, a whole bunch of math standards. So, where, what we might see here is, um, this would be another way for us to identify needs of maybe a student cohort. Or, um, if there was something that we saw, say, something pink show up a couple of years in a row, we might want to address that also periodically. So, um, if I was looking at a sixth grade math or sixth grade English, and I saw one or two of those standards coming up, I might say, this cohort is a little bit weaker in these two areas. So, let's talk to the seventh grade teacher and let him or her know and understand that and see where those students are. That might be something that we can do with that. Um, finally, um, we have just a data work going on at our department meetings, 12. We have what Mr. Naventio calls a SWOT meetings. He's, he's working on again, which is a school-wide assessment team, which digs into that data. And Frank, as you mentioned, that, they go through that, they start looking for those areas, um, curricularly and individually with students as well, and then show the metrics back to, uh, even grade levels.
But again, this is one aspect we share it because it's something that the state does. It does not make or write who we are as a district. It gives us a guidance to be able to move forward on it. And when we're using these items, they're important to look at because it does, and it's supposed to correlate with the state's standards. So, we're looking at them and using them to be able to evaluate our maths, evaluate our progress, and use it as a measure to evaluate how we're doing and how we can help support students. Any questions?
Do you think that the size of our school district is advantageous, uh, for this kind of work, where we can really zone in on kids, cohorts, where?
I think we're really fortunate because we know our students. We know them by name. Our principals know them by names and know who they are. Um, I think that's a real advantage.
I once lived in a school district with 13,000 students, and our, my kids were going to a middle school that was fifth largest in the state, and I don't think anybody knew anybody. And when we came here, I think this was what appealed to us to a great extent. And it's really great to hear that you can really zone in on, uh, knowing what are the strengths and weaknesses that we've got to work on with this kid individually. Thank you.
What is our size? But on the other hand, does our size have an impact?
So small that.
Right, the statistical significance, you know, if we, especially if we bring down smaller groups within a grade, we've lost any ability to say anything. And, and I just think that it gets challenging because there are such small groups.
That is exactly the other side of that.
Look at that math core. For example, we had more students sit for that exam. All of a sudden, our number's almost doubled, right? And it just comes down from the number of students that sat.
Well, I realize it, and, and I'd say it's a good point, but, but my, my point was more of the advantages of what we can do for students, statistics aside. We can really focus in on proficiency with individual kids.
Yeah, I agree with you completely, but I, I, but I think the part that I would underscore what Rachel said is just that, you know, so how important is this one, one number or this one measure or whatever it is? Now, if we see that a cohort like our economically disadvantaged in both buildings are not performing well, that's telling you something. It's not just, you know, a group of 10 students in one grade level or something. It's, it's, it's across the board, and that's something to know, right? That's something I want to pay attention to. But again, we can go back to that personal piece, that understanding, that knowledge of who our students are not being so big that people become anonymous or lost or invisible.
Yeah.
We can.
And I think, and that's, oh, I'm sorry. But I think it's important when we talk about our child study teams or like our multi-tier system of approach, like, we're able to really, I mean, when they meet with our kids, they can take a whole day and meet with our, about our whole, every single building. Other districts can't do that, right? So, and our teachers have multiple levels and multiple ways to be able to look at it, and they're really addressing our kids. So, you know, again, I'm a parent in children's district because of its size. Right? And I think it's important that we do have the ability to be able to target our students and use some of our data to be able to help us evaluate where we are.
And to play one more. And to play one more time with the lens metaphor, right? We went out with, but then you've got the back life scale part, right? Because there are so many different facets, attendance and assessment and wellness and all those things that play into where what a student looks like and what we do with that student and how would the problem occur.
I appreciate the way you both have brought in the idea that teachers are seeing these students. Because this is, if they're looking at this data now, this is something that happened seven months ago.
Right.
So.
It is.
The teachers have millions of ways to assess the students in their classrooms. And, and I think Frank, you, you've mentioned that in a number of different ways. So this is, you know, another.
It's a great piece for us to look at.
A bigger picture? Yeah.
It's not really a great piece to look at the individual.
Yeah. And even that bigger picture is statistically.
Depending on how much it averages.
So definitely whether it fits a news care, but it was good conversation. Thank you so much, Karen. And we, we can share it out. We, Karen and I were actually tweaking this presentation today, so that's why it wasn't posted, because we were just looking to go through it and make sure that. Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
I do have a couple more things, so I, I wanted to apologize for how long it is. But kind of the first thing I want to talk about, I wrote it down because I think this is important, is, you know, we alluded to it in the very beginning, that there are really a lot of great things happening in the fall, and we have so many things to, to look at and have recognition for. And if we, and if we were to take the recognition and look at it, it would seriously take us even longer than we've been here already. You know, we have the sectional championship for the girls, varsity soccer, we have the championships for our track, you know, we also have all the others. But I want to take a moment and realize not only the large-scale accomplishments, but also the small daily times. I think this is really important, and it's kind of been nagging on me a little bit. Success and recognition happens at every single level in this district, from the varsity levels of winning sectional championships, to making it to the championship level, to the individual levels, or to having our team celebrate a win over a team that they didn't think they could win, right? So let's say we have one in seventeen, or whatever it would be, when our kids are doing this, even at the modified level or whatever, I think it's important to know that we have these little successes that our kids take pride in every day. But, you know, in our fall athletes, our volleyball, soccer, swim, tennis, cross-country and golf have all shown determination and grit on multiple levels. Our music and art programs have excelled from the cabaret that we all talked about, and I was honestly, Karen, in tears watching my child the other night. Can't, can't handle it. But, you know, the upcoming play, the musical performance, to the everyday, and I think this is a part that not everybody sees, there's everyday excellence happening in the art and music rooms every single day from K to twelve. And that happens, and our staff excel at that as well. Instructionally, our students put forth their best effort daily, and our staff continually meets the needs of our students along with building. Upon the understanding of their curriculum pedagogy, we have students this past month mix it up and be brave to sit at a table or with people that they've never sat with before. That's a huge success. And for a kid, I will tell you, that is extremely difficult to do. I sat with the fourth graders, I mixed it up down there, I ate lunch with them, and it was amazing just to be a part of that and watch the students interact with one another in a way that they may not have interacted with each other.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
So one thing that came up in the counseling meeting was that, from one of the parents who was also an employee of the district, that those types of skills are so needed now that her daughter's in college and encountering people she's never met before, doesn't know how they feel about her, how she feels about them, but that ability to engage is so important. So teaching those skills when they're little is great.
And acknowledging the fact that our students were brave enough to do. I think that's an important accomplishment that we don't always do, you know, and acknowledging that our staff took on the challenge of doing it as well. You know, this goes for our staff, doing the things that are other normal purviews, such as SEL, to creating lessons that challenge themselves and others. Every day we excel, and although we may not point it out, it's important to note. But there's something else I want to note, that with every accomplishment, there may be a goal that did not get met or a feat not attained that was won. Because again, we put pressures on ourselves as adults and on students and as our children. It's important to note that that itself is a win, to be in an environment where it's commended to try, whether or whether or not you succeed, to learn from our experiences and never get up, to show grit and learn. That's what we're here for, and that's what the bird stands for. And I just think it's important that we talk about that, at least take a moment to acknowledge it. I'm thankful for our school community that takes pride in the successes that we have of our students, but also takes pride in the fact that our students can fail, our staff can fail, and will continually try to grow. So I want to say congratulations to all of our Blackbirds for everything they did. Just something I wanted to bring up is.
There, there.
Sorry. I decided I was getting on my soapbox tonight to Jim, so I want to apologize right there. But I thought that was an important thing. Lastly, we want to kind of talk about our transportation facility. We had a study done about the ability for us to be able to have power going in. Jim, do you want to talk about that very quickly?
So as part of a ICERTA-approved study through a local consultant, one of the first things they did was reach out to National Grid, just to get an evaluation of the site and make sure what kind of energy is going by, whether or not we have enough. We got their report back last week, and the line going here on Martin Road has over four megawatts of available space over and above the max that has been, has been placed. And they estimate that our facility would take about six hundred and eighty kilowatts. So it's well within that. So that was one of the big bottlenecks we were a little concerned about.
More than a little.
And will take about one-sixth to one-seventh of the headspace even at the maximum use that they currently have. So that's really good. That's a start. That means we can put in our, it'll be the four-eighty phase, three-phase transformer there, which will allow us to have the direct fast chargers for the buses, which is very, very good. A lot of districts are going to have trouble getting to that level, so.
And it will also allow us to buy the buses that have a little bit more charge.
Right.
So we can then get more mileage and more use out of some of the buses. So it was a very positive report back that we were really nervous about, because other districts who have been doing this haven't been as lucky as we were. So those are really positives, and I think we still have to point out over and over again that that was lucky.
And that all has to work together with National Grid, with the estimation from the consulting firm about what it's going to take, what kind of conduits, what kind of conditions. But that one big bottleneck is now out of the way, thankfully. So, and we'll be able to move forward from here.
The next step is that we're working with our grant services, trying to figure out what's going to be allowable for our buses. Because again, I want to start giving you the sticker shock now, so you understand, a electric bus, typical larger scale bus, is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And with the battery that we want, it'll be closer to five hundred.
A normal bus, Jim?
Is roughly at this point, one-seventy.
So New York State has a mandate currently that we have to start buying in 2027. Sure that mandate is going to change a little bit as time goes on, but we still have to plan and be prepared for it. The grant services and is working with us to be able to find different grants or options for us that will lessen that burden for our community. And we are working on a long-range plan that will allow us to really not have as much of a burden impact on our community as we follow through on the mandates. Jim, do you want to speak? I'm, I'm giving a very brief overview at the moment.
There are different pieces, but essentially, the state has said you have to, we're only going to pay for this for you over twelve years versus five years for a conventional bus. So it spreads out the borrowing more if you follow that schedule. But then you run into issues because the batteries are only warranted for eight years. So we have tried to consider all that and gone to like a ten-year replacement schedule, hoping that things will even out. And I put a debt service together. It's, it's not finalized yet, but it'll show what the impacts will be year by year by year.
We are working through, working on grants and working on incentives as we can to help minimize the burden as we still try to figure out what we can do and how we can do it, either with the small bus to begin with or larger buses. But we do want to make that mandate an appropriate timeframe, otherwise we don't want to be off guard and not be ready. The one good thing, before you ask that one question, I just want to say the one really good thing is that we are building. So the fact that we are building, we're able to safeguard and future-proof some of these things that other people may not be able to do. And as we're doing so, we're not, we're not going to buy twenty chargers, right? We know better than that, because we might buy five chargers and then, guess what? They're obsolete. So we're going to put the infrastructure into that transportation facility now, knowing what we have after we've done the fleet assessment. And we're going to plan to be able to slowly roll this out over a period of, hopefully long before, long after Jim and I are gone. This is when it will finally be done, because again, I think they're going to push that mandate up even further. Question?
Has our grants consultants or anyone else been able to look at one-seventy ninety charter button code?
That was, I had that discussion with them when we were putting this together. It is part of, just part of the review. They're going to look at all the potential sources that can help us out.
And some of the other things that we're going to look at is, if a bus goes through a low socioeconomic neighborhood, so let's say not from us, but let's say we have our out-of-district buses and out-of-district runs, we could utilize a grant that goes through low socioeconomic levels to be able to buy those buses, even though we aren't as low socioeconomic district. So we always say, we don't have enough levels of poverty to be able to get us in these grants, but if they go through those neighborhoods and utilize that, we could utilize it outside of Bethlehem. Did that recently, as we went to a thing that they talked about. So there are options that we can use to help offset.
Every one of our out-of-district runs goes into an economically disadvantaged.
So we could look at purchasing buses that first are for economically disadvantaged areas, then it would help really offset some of those costs. So we're looking at every level as we put together a plan and proposal. We just wanted to kind of give you that very generic overview as we start going into this, because it's going to get more in-depth as we start digging into this. Other questions?
What did you say about 2027? That's when we have to.
That's when you have to buy your first.
No, no, that's, that's when you're, according to the current law, not allowed to purchase internal combustion at all. So.
But we really think that that's, all conversational legislation and everything else, that's going to get pushed back. I mean, there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of advocacy from districts and school officials, saying that it's not, it's not feasible in that timeframe, and there's too many outlying issues right now that we have to work through. It's feasible, it's going to get better, electric cars are constantly improving, but they just got to slow it back a little bit and not put so much burden on districts until we have an ability to really understand.
That's a huge, unfounded man. Huge. And at some point, they're going to have to come to the understanding that you're going to push this on every school district in the state, and the difference is one-seventy to five hundred thousand, we're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars, legislature is going to have to come to their senses or come up with the money.
Again, our fleet, twenty-eight buses, including small ones and suburbans. Other districts, hundred and fifty.
Oh, yeah.
Two hundred. So, you know, still, it's, it's still a large burden.
Then there's all sorts of questions in my head about lifecycle analysis on the footprint of all this, and this meeting could go on till like 2:00 AM, so we're not going to do that. My one question is, you guys went, knowing that you guys went to an electric bus thing that I had to miss, unfortunately.
Yep.
It's been cool. I'm sure it was really cool. The cost of maintaining an electric bus versus maintaining and running a regular combustion bus, how do those balance? Is, is there a difference?
From my understanding, and this is only from the first two years of Bethlehem, it's not a huge difference, because while you get, you get rid of the engine with the battery, but you still have to propel it, so you have motors and the wheels and brakes and everything like that. They're still mechanical.
But the first two years would be the, the two years where everything is.
We asked, well, we asked that question at Bethlehem specifically, and the answer was they didn't have enough data to be able to fully give us that answer back. So we're making a lot of conjecture by saying that, but they didn't have the data yet to be able to truly understand the impact.
I think you're four, five, six, seven, that's.
It is, and it's really going to come down to your runs. Because again, if you're, if you're, max run is a hundred that that bus can give, you can't run it after twenty percent of capacity of the battery, so you're saying you're going to get eighty miles, right? And our runs are roughly anywhere between five and fifty per leg. So that is feasible for our in-district runs or out-of-district runs, or our overnight or our, our, our field trips or any of our athletic events, that's going to become an issue because we don't have charging stations available, facilities yet or everything else. And even then, what you have to take into consideration is something that we learned is you have battery buses, everything drains that battery. So let's say it's winter, you're going to have that heater on. They actually make diesel heaters for electric buses. So there's a lot of work still being done on this to be able to.
Tax credit in there, Frank.
Yeah, fine. So, but there's time. But again, I, what I want to share, what I really want to share was, we're in a good infrastructure place right now in the district, which is better than where we could have been. We have the foundations to be able to put into our facilities. We're looking at an initial plan, we're offsetting that with France or anything else we can do to be able to keep in mind the taxpayers and the feasibility of all this. But it's a slow road, because yes, we're going to be doing the right thing by the environment and changing our footprint, but it's going to take time for us to get there.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry to drag that.
And I have one last thing. I swear to God, it'll be super quick. Spot patrol. It was just, we wanted to say, they, they have, they have started putting in our cameras into our buses. They're going to be working on the weekends, so if people drive by and they're wondering who's messing with our buses, it's approved, they're allowed to be there putting cameras into our facilities. But it's finally started, so it's going to take some time for us to get our fleet up and running, but the first leg of that now is going. That's all I have. Now I'm.
All right, don't pass the stuff. With that, we are going to move into the more through the agenda to four-point-one minutes of the regular meeting. Are there any thoughts, questions, comments on this, on the minutes from our October meeting? Would anyone like to move them? Second?
Second.
All in favor? In fact, here everyone say aye, don't ask if anyone closes, but anyone does please. With that, move to treasure reports, item five-point-one, action item. Any good answer questions? Anyone want to move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel items. Any questions, thoughts? Anyone want to move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Suzanne Hartman for school advisor. That was a huge success last year.
Fabulous. All right. CSC recommendations. Any thoughts or questions? Anyone want to move it?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, substitute teacher appointments from BOSI's. Questions, thoughts? Move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Newsbo membership. Side note, that meeting was seven hours and fifty minutes long, and they did discuss the electric buses. So Newsbo will be trying to make sure that electric bus adoption is something that can work for districts in the way it gets them. Do we want to have any thoughts or questions other than? Nope. Anyone want to move it?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Out-of-town field trip request. Six flags. Anyone want to ask a question about it, think about it? Move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Revisions to the schedule for 2023, 24. I believe we kind of just touched on these during audit about budget hearing, the regular meeting, just adjusting everything because of the late Tuesdays fall. Any thoughts or questions? Comments? Thanks for catching us now, so everyone can plan their lives in the name. Goodie everyone who wants to like to attend the budget hearing meeting today. Thoughts, questions? Move? Move it, anyone?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Bits for fresh produce. You usually have a question about this. How many bits came in? I'm sorry, would you like to ask?
There you go.
Rob would like to know how many bids came in.
Yeah, two bits.
Sweet.
I love Christine.
More than one.
All right, and this bid is the better bid I'm looking. Other questions or thoughts? All right, we could talk about produce for a while or we could move it.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we move to some old business, starting with the not so old business. Although it does feel like about a week ago we had an audit committee meeting.
It's about two hours old. So first we received the report of our external audit by the Fana D over. There were no significant accounting issues, no significant transactions, no disagreements with management. Great job, Jim.
And my entire office.
And and staff. We received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest assurance that they can give us. Our financial statements were presented fairly in accordance with GAAP. One issue that they identified was that our unrestricted fund balance was slightly over 4%. And we worked really hard last year to make sure we came in right in that 4%, but then of course as numbers changed, we ended up a little over. But it was not material and did not in any way impact our rating. School lunch fund was operating at a deficit, which we know that's been the case, but it was only 13,000, which I was pretty impressed by. Extra classroom funds, I can't recall, but I think this might be the first year that we received an unmodified finding.
We received that last year because of some changes in policy.
So once again, unmodified findings, so another great job, Jim and staff, keeping on top of those extra classroom funds, of which there are many.
And Jen Smith.
Yeah.
Jen Smith says our.
She's an extra great pillar.
Honestly, a lot of that credit goes directly to Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, we also had a presentation from an attorney at Irwin and.
Urban and Ferlazzo.
From Scott Canal, who did an amazing job explaining to us Title IX, which we have had questions about and we said in our last audit committee meeting that we were going to try and get some foundational Title IX education. And I think Scott most certainly provided it. Some of there was definitely some takeaways for us. I think somewhat on the funding side, but more so on the policy side. So I'm sure that will come up. I would encourage anyone who didn't see the meeting to actually watch it because it really was very good. And then we ran through our usual agenda items, including minutes, claims auditor reports. On the claims audit front, with three exceptions, a few other issues that were noted, nothing major. We talked about the budget calendar and the school lunch fund, which was again out of deficit, completely expected in terms of starting up the school year. And we also had one less service day. Okay. And then we'll meet again, we're scheduled to meet again, I'll say to 6:00.
And I just noted that we don't have an agenda item to accept the audit reports, so we might want to take care of that. Good night.
Do that tonight?
Because we have to have them in by 15.
All right, so let's move that to 7.10.
I'll say I'll make a motion to modify the agenda to have acceptance of the auditors before.
Anyone want to?
I'll check it today.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, we're going to add item 7.10 to do that. And if I forget. With that, we are going to move to 6.2, the curriculum committee.
We have not met since the last board meeting, so there's nothing new to report at this time. Our next meeting will be next week, Tuesday, 11:14.
Thank you very much. And with that, we move to item 6.3, facilities committee.
We have also not met, we are meeting tomorrow, 5:15 now, is that right?
5:15 tomorrow. So there will be some must see coming up as well as the audit. And with that, there's also policy must see YouTube. And I believe you guys kept the meeting under two hours. You've been doing great.
It's amazing. I don't know, it was like an hour.
I said an hour, but I was wrong.
Under two hours is is an all time shortness record for you guys.
About one before that was one hour. So we met twice since last board meeting.
So two and a half hours total.
So with that said, a huge thank you to the policy team because everyone did a lot of homework and outside of the meetings so that we can crank through this huge list we have tonight. So I'm just going to go through all the policies that we have up for vote tonight, along with some policies that need to be rescinded because of the changes to the policies. Is that okay, encourage?
Yeah, are these votes or first reads or some of the first reads?
No.
I don't think any will be first read.
They're all revisions.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just confirm.
So it's okay to just go through.
Yeah, go through and if there's anything we need to discuss, be sure.
Okay, we'll start with the policy group of 0100, which covers equal opportunity and non discrimination. A lot of these policies we're talking about tonight were very outdated in Morrisville. So that's why it got a little confusing as we tried to make revisions and why the policies you see on board docs don't show the actual changes because we just had to start over basically. So it makes it a little bit harder as a board member to know what would change. So I'll try to summarize.
This is 7.8.
7.8, yes.
One of the.
Oh.
Your order is your order on.
I'm going in the.
That's fine.
So anyway, group 0100, equal opportunity, non discrimination. This policy is like a blanket notice of non discrimination of all legally protected classes. It also addresses public notification requirements. It establishes grievance procedures. And something new for us was it addresses website accessibility for persons with disabilities. Now, the way everything is structured and there's going to be some foreshadowing here because all of these policies are kind of interwoven, which makes it complicated. But now the way they're set up, all complaints of discrimination and harassment made by employees and applicants are now addressed in policy 110.2, which is called sexual harassment in the workplace, which we'll get to in a minute. Complaints of discrimination and harassment by students are addressed by the process outlined in policy 0115, which is student bullying and harassment prevention and intervention. So that's kind of the major change to 0100 is that things got moved to 110 and 115. Because of these changes, we are going to have to tonight, if everyone agrees, rescind our current 0100R, which is equal opportunity and non discrimination regulation, because that will be replaced and will get there to 110.2, which is sexual harassment of employees. We'll also have to rescind 0100E, which is equal opportunity and non discrimination complaint form. And that will be replaced by 110.2E, sexual harassment in the workplace complaint form. So I think that covers 0100. Tim or Argie or Frank? Okay, all right. We'll move on to 0110, which covers sexual harassment. Again, our policies are pretty outdated, they were from 2018. There's been several changes in New York State law regarding workplace sexual harassment. And we kind of went with Newsbo's guidance who felt it was no longer feasible to maintain one comprehensive policy and regulation for sexual harassment of both students and employees. So they chose to split, as agreed, sexual harassment into two parts, one for students and one for employees. So that's the major change here. So our new reconfiguration, if you look at policy 110, it's labeled sexual harassment is basically an introduction. And 110.1 is sexual harassment of students. And along with that is 110.1R, which is sexual harassment of students regulation. And we have 110.2 now that covers sexual harassment of employees and the related 110.2 sexual harassment in the workplace complaint form. If we agree to make these changes, we will have to rescind 110E complaint form for reporting sexual harassment because this is now covered in 110.2 and 115E for students because New York State and Newsbo recommend one form and process for both DASSA and sexual harassment. We'll get to 115.
No, in 7.6, there's 110 as just as draft policy, but we are accepting, is there?
It's just a labeling of our internal file that wasn't marked final.
Okay, so that's the one we're.
It was our final, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just checking.
Also in 110, we'll have to rescind 110R, which was sexual harassment regulation because this, if we adopt these changes I'm suggesting tonight and our committee is not just me, this is now covered by 110.1R for students and 110.2 for employees. I think that's 110. Anything, anyone?
I'm confused when I was there.
I know. Okay, on to with 0115, which covers student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. Our policies again were a little old from 2012. All the changes we're bringing forward tonight, basically the policy has been updated to reflect provisions and requirements in the dignity for all students act, which a lot of times we hear referred to as DASSA or DASSA. And it also includes changes made under the Crown Act. And that now we, the 0115E is the new complaint form that will be used for both this policy, DASSA and sexual harassment for students. So we've updated that. We didn't have to make many changes to our existing 115E, but we did add a little intro language that mirrored our policy language to make them both the same. 0115 refers to policy 5710, which I'll get to next. And I forgot to mention that 0100 refers to policy 9140.1, which I'll get to as well. So that covers 0115. Any anything to add for any policies?
Is it 0115R for?
It's listed here in the agenda.
The agenda is RW.
It said regulation, I think it was. Are you asking about the file name or the actual?
It says R at the top of the document.
I think that's the file name. I'm assuming. I think it's just the way the files were labeled.
I think I'll look in the folder. But the language is the same.
The language is correct, I think it's just the name of the files.
It's all good.
If you look at it and yeah. I think I pulled them all up and opened them all before I came to make sure.
What I was looking at, yeah.
Yeah, so we have the final 0115, the final 0115RW dot reg, which is here. And then Trish mentioned the DASSA complaint form, which is E, which is.
Okay, that's not there.
So there's a 0115 policy, a 0115 reg and a 0115 exhibit.
I don't think the E is attached to here.
Here, but I thought it was somewhere else. I saw E elsewhere. We could always start it next time if we need to. Let me, let me look at. It might be the.
Or would they use the one form?
I think it's 110.1R, let me double check that.
It's the same form for everything.
Yeah.
110.1, gotcha.
I think that's what.
Yeah, yeah, let me, I'll make sure.
Thank you.
Come on, you said move on, aren't you ready to do that? Yeah, go go ahead. All right, we have one to cover.
Months ago.
We also have for you tonight, even enjoyment, policy 5710, which is now called school safety and education climate reporting. This policy was revised to reflect the New York State Education Department terminology of the school safety and educational climate reporting system, which they refer to as SSEC. This was formerly known as violent and disruptive incident reporting, which a lot of people know from Vader. It's called Vader. This SSEC also incorporates the DASSA reporting on harassment, bullying and discrimination.
Would that use the 110.1E as well?
It's, I think, it's also supposed to be the 0115E. Okay, okay. So now the one, I just, the 110.1R is is the reg to a company 110.1. I got to figure out what is the DASSA complaint form. 0115E.
That's just not a file that is included in the agenda.
Worst case scenario, if we can adopt that next meeting.
If something comes.
That was along with the least amount of changes, which is.
Yeah.
Oh. You're right, Trish. The 115E. No, that's old, sorry, all right, nevermind. Yeah. So the 5710, policy 5710, basically it's updated to state current with regulation. Now that we're using SSEC as required by New York State, we can rescind policy 57. That was my phone, 10R, because that basically covered the Vader system. So we no longer need. And lastly, 9140.1, titled staff complaints and grievances. Our policy was very old, 2003. This policy was referred to in policy 0100, which we're doing tonight. So we made sure all the cross references are updated as well, which is why we looked at 9140.1. It's been updated to clarify purpose and to ensure compliance with state law. And just so the board knows, very limited policy complaints here. It's only for complaints not covered by contract or policies 0100 or 0110. So those are the policies we have for you tonight. So that's one thing we dealt with. We're also continually as policy committee trying to get organized over what's required annually. And we discovered a few things that we need to review as a full board on an annual basis. So we're working with Frank to try to get that into our process. And I sent everyone in our committee, our running agendas. We keep a list of things on our radar. And I ask any board member that wants to ask us to prioritize something on that list or add something to the list, please always know we're just the committee of the full board. So if the full board has anything. And I was also, we also as a committee, we're hoping for a little direction from the full board about our current policy 5451, which is life threatening allergens. We were starting to look at it and just wanted to make sure the full board wanted to continue on. Currently we have a separate policy on this. Newsbo's recommended policy, they don't have a separate policy, they have a segment within student health services. We didn't want to make a decision for the full board, so basically we're just asking direction if we want to continue with a separate policy. And outside of that policy, our district has procedures, but that's, you know, if any board member had any concern about any of those procedures, I think we just wanted an overall touch base and make sure we continue on. Pat or G, it looks like you might be able to summarize it for me.
Well, I'll back up. Yeah, I'm kind of looking at you and Frank at the same time. I guess I'll back up a little bit. We had a parent raise a concern about our current policy.
I think more of a procedure.
More, yeah, more of the procedure. And that prompted us to take a look at the policy. We all, I think we're fairly comfortable with what we had, but we wanted to raise it to the full board in case anyone has an opinion. Any other context you want to add, Frank?
Yeah, it's a, so Borisville was very proactive in this policy. A lot of other schools just have an antiflaxis policy that guides this. Borisville previously already created a policy that's pretty comprehensive in its path regarding allergens in the district. And also then, it also goes along with the student health plan at 504, so mirrors what those currently are. Basically what it says is there's going to be a directive, it's going to be able to give insight to the district already. And it doesn't ban peanuts or any allergens from schools. I think that is always the question of parents who have children with allergies, they're very concerned. I can completely understand that is, you know, does the district want to take a heavier stance on banning allergies or not? I think that's where a parent concern would come into play is that, you know, as we get older and as we start building in this, do we allow for that freedom of students that still have a lot of procedures and protocols put in place, which we do within our policies and within student health plans? Or does the district say, no, we're really going to take a real finite stance and say, no, we're not having any allergens in school, which creates its own issues as itself. So that's, I think, where the question of the parent came in is, you know, are we happy with what our policy currently says? Do we feel safeguard students? And is there anything more that we can do? Like, okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
You said it much better.
I can't believe I did it still at 8:30 in the night, I want to do it. I wouldn't do it.
I think the policy that we have now is really thorough. And, uh, in fact, what NISB's done by incorporating it into their, uh, Student Health Services, I think they kind of gave it short trip. And I think it deserves to be a separate policy. I think what we've got in place is pretty good right now. But if the board would like us to, I think we're gonna go and look at the Student Health Services anyway. But it's probably gonna run parallel along there. So.
We just wanted to do a quick read of the board. Anyone have any concerns if we continue approaching it with what we currently have? Or if you think of things afterward, just reach out to me.
You know, I was just gonna say, um, I, I, I would like to, um, I guess, understand a little bit more, like, why, why would NISB have a separate policy, you know, that went towards the students?
Yeah.
They have the very similar language, but condensed in their student.
Our is more prescriptive towards allergens. So we, theirs is more prescriptive towards anaphylaxis.
Yeah.
So we just kind of delineate it a little bit more and a little bit more prescribed for our students. This is more prescribed for policy directive. Like, NISB's more of an oversight view. It doesn't really capture the student component. Corysville's policy really does capture the student component and then some procedure involved into that policy.
And you, and you were gonna look at this anyway because it needed to be updated?
It, it came to our attention because of a parent asking a question, so then we pulled the policy out and took a look as a committee.
But when does our policy date?
It's March 9th to 2019. Yes, that's when it was adopted.
Yeah.
It hasn't been updated since.
Doesn't mean it's not, does it? Um, I don't have any concerns about policy as it currently stands.
Great. So.
Barbara, did you, or you were just asking questions?
No, no, I.
All right. I think, oh, our next meeting is December 6th. So if anyone on the board wants to reach out to us with any priorities or take a look at our rolling agenda, please feel free.
Does boost your club on the rolling agenda?
Yes, it is, it is. And now it might, yeah, priority. And Jeff, I noticed one thing on our policy that's up for vote tonight on 110.1. It just has a date of, um, November 7th, and it should be November 6th. Trying to be, you know, but at the very end, I noticed the date was one day off. Any questions or anything?
Just a round of applause for that one.
Yeah.
Great job, we can share.
Thank you, guys.
That's huge. Um, lots of meetings and hours and hours.
Not a thing to the team. They spend a lot of hours outside of our meeting.
Thank you. Really done a wonderful job with our chair. Thank you.
Um, with that, we can move to new business. Um, item seven, we're gonna take these in order in which they appear in the agenda.
Okay.
Um, because that is how it's controlled. 7.1, Policy 0115. Um, are there any thoughts or questions? And should be, yeah.
Well, we'll have to deal with 115E next meeting. Does that help you?
Yeah. If that's okay? Yeah. And if something does come up between now and then that requires 115E, we'll deal with that.
We already have a form that's, we updated it to match the language that we could have policy.
So it's a small change.
Very small change.
Okay.
If our form is, we already, we have that form.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, or is there anything that we need to talk about regarding 115? Or, okay, then anyone want to move it?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, can we take 7.2 and 7.3 together, abolishing and adopting? If there are any things we want to talk about regarding 5710? No? Anyone want to move it? This is 7.2 and 7.3 that you need. Okay, moving it. I'll, second, okay, seconding?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, 9410. Now that's 9140. Seven, item 7.4 on the agenda. Anyone want to comment, discuss? Anything else? Okay, um, anyone want to move it?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, we're gonna look at 7.5 and 7.6 together, the abolishing of old.
Question, uh, do, don't 7.7 and 7.8, aren't there some interdependencies between the 0100 and 0110 reference back or no? We need something?
Yeah.
Like, do you have to take all four of those together is my question? Because you need to change to one, and then we didn't adopt the other one. We moved stuff.
Yeah, we could consent the agenda. We could have consented the whole thing, but.
Yeah, well, but these are, these in particular are those that, if you don't pass them all together.
Worst.
Yeah, so.
Let's try, let's try to, um, yeah, not make this meeting.
So do all, yeah.
The worst.
So you could do 7.5, 7.6.
Yeah, should we take it?
7.7.
And 7.1.
Are you, are you guys good with that kind of consent all the way down? Any thoughts, questions, hopes? Movement?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 7.5, 7.8. That's, um, 7.1 to 7.8 all passed, which, um, represents probably 200, 300 hours. People working on that? All right, with that, we're gonna move to item 7.9, where many people have offered to provide, um, generous donations towards the district, towards various areas of the district. Um, any thoughts or questions on this? All right, anyone want to move it?
I'll move it with gratitude.
Second?
I'll second it.
With gratitude and all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you with much more gratitude as well. All right, 7.1 was added to the agenda because we. 7.10, thank you. Um, that is accepting the audit report that was presented during audit today. Um, would anyone like to discuss this? Would anyone like to move this?
I'll move it.
Anyone like to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. With that, we move to the other business. This is the second opportunity for the public to be heard. If there's anyone in the public who'd like to come and speak, the podium awaits you. Please start with your name.
My name's Steve Ayers, Chief of Sound Bar, Barbara.
Thank you, Steve.
Um, I know you guys met previously with some of our people before. Um, just checking back to see what had later been made and stuff. It looks like the numbers, some of the numbers got changed and stuff, which was, was a concern for us when we initially saw this. Um, it's harder and harder for us to get these numbers for our departments to protect the community and the services around here recently. Um, the training hours have skyrocketed, what it takes for these volunteers to take time from their homes, families, and everything else to do this. Um, I think in the process of what you guys are looking to do along with the towns and stuff, this is gonna help us immensely to try to keep some people in this because the way things were headed is there's nothing given back to us. Not that we're asking for it, we do it because we love it. But it's, it's getting harder and harder for everybody to work, volunteer, and do everything that they need to do. And that's getting very difficult for that. And for the way things are headed is if we don't do something to keep the members we have so we can protect the community,[1618.18]